I would like to note that we have all members of the council with the exception of Mr. Ryan Langley present tonight, and Ken Nenley is going to lead us in the prayer of the pledge.
My only Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to come together to better the city of Ballenger. I pray that we can all discuss these issues and deal with it in a perspective that respects everyone. We bless Ryan and hope he gets better, you know, each day. And I pray that everyone that has been affected by this virus, you know, recovers, you know, to the best of their will. In Jesus' name of prayer, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored and faithful to the flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one God, one indivisible.
Thanks, Ken. Okay, at this time, we'll have opportunity for the public to address council. Time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Actually, three things, but the third one actually has to do with 5.5, so I'm gonna wait to do it, because we have three minutes. My first question is, on the agenda search, there's one item, and it's okay if you can't elaborate, I just wanna know, consideration, security concerns, what kind of security concerns? Like, are we talking computer? Are we talking about here? Is there anything that you can say that to a library that's kind of vague?
It's a generalization. It's for us to cover anything that has to do with security citywide. Like you said, whether it's our transition with IT, we have some communications that have recently changed, so it's just an opportunity for us to discuss some things.
Yes.
And we're not gonna make any action either of them.
Okay, appreciate that. The other question has to do with the agenda software. We're still using that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does everyone have any working knowledge of it? That we're aware of?
It is one of those things that it seems that it keeps having some issues.
Uh-huh.
That's one way to put it.
Okay.
If you can see under my mask, you can see I'm trying to smile right now.
You're good.
Chad and I and John are doing a webinar with another firm, Wednesday.
Okay.
It's called, the name is escaping me right now, but anyway, we're working with them and it looks to be a better platform and a lot easier to use, and we'll be able to push out more information and be the unusual to be able to use it.
Glad to hear that.
So we're constantly looking for something to work smarter on our part.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
The question, the main concern that I have was that it seems like sometimes it just wasn't getting pushed out, which might be useful for software. I know at the beginning it was just a trial run. Did we actually just pay by month? Did we pay for it for a whole year? How did we do that? When did we purchase the software? Do y'all remember?
That was before my time here. That was in place before I got here.
Okay.
I believe we did it on the annual subscription.
On an annual subscription, and that's, well, you probably don't know when that's supposed to come out, but I figure it'd be probably pretty soon.
It'd be pretty quick. That's why we're looking at something else.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
In line with your question about agendas, and this is all for John, Ken, can we start putting, opening our meeting on that on a Monday, so that if I need to add something before Friday, that I'm not locked out to add something?
Yeah, I don't know that we found any issues where anybody was locked out on.
Well, I couldn't add anything to this one.
I don't, no, what point in time were we trying to add on? Today?
No, that would be pretty easy.
This was last week, Monday?
This was, no, I won't, I, I didn't have any access to it till Friday, when the finalized agenda was posted. There was, and I, I went multiple times, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, to try, and I had absolutely no access to it.
I know Chad had worked with you a little bit, um, trying to be too logged in.
Well, I logged in, no problem, because Chad fixed that, wherever you are, Chad, good job, but, but he fixed that, and it just, it never showed me an agenda coming up until, like I said, until Friday.
Okay.
And so, I, the, the time of software is kind of defeated. Me and Rick and Ryan and Ken can't, and Bonnie can't add to it when we need to.
Sure, and I appreciate that.
I think that's making a decision on this other software, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it pushed us to the shelf. We tried another vendor called Munich and Sweetwater, and it was so cumbersome, and it failed miserably. We had to go back to another way of doing business, and if these people can't get us what we need, then I do have a, I do have a plan B or C, whatever you want to play with. So, that'll, we'll just play it by ear after we talk to these folks Wednesday.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else want to address council? Okay. Item number 4.1, City Council will consider approval of the minutes for December 7th and December 17th, 2020 meeting. I, I already had two things, but I wanted to give them to you. Do you have a motion?
Making both of your approval of the minutes for the last seven, December, December 17th. I second that.
All taken.
All taken.
Motion carries. Item 4.2, Statement by the Director of Finance on City's Financial Position.
I'm gonna run through probably 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4 all for you, and I'm gonna start with 4.2. So I gave you a packet that's in front of you that has a pretty little overview, satellite view, and... This should look familiar. This is what we approved as the budget, and we're at a template that's carried forward. On that first page, it has our outline of what we budgeted for as far as revenues. Today, our actual revenues are somewhere below. Where we compare where we expected to, where we're versus where we're at actually, the head of the area was a little bit behind. Our sales tax is pretty dang close to where we'd like to be. This doesn't take into account whatever the most recent cost we're gonna be getting in is, that we're a month off, and getting our reports and our check in for that. So, I actually expect that we're doing better than what I show here, but this is the true what it is today. We're in a surplus as far as our revenues from trash sales and sewer sales, and a slight deficit on water sales. Overall, if you compare where we should be right now for fiscal year 21, we're operating at a positive of about one and a half percent where you compare our expenses to our revenues. So, we're operating currently at a surplus, which I have no problem with. On the timeline, it just kind of gives you where we're at on that timeline that I put out. We're working with the auditors. They've been out twice now. It's mainly been on policy and procedure. The auditors seem to have suggested that there's gonna be significant suggestions for us to change our policies, which I think is the whole reason why Brian and I got brought in, was to make sure that things are working in more streamlined, efficient, and transparent, appropriate fashion. So, we were expecting that to come through, and we were working with them on their suggestions and some of their comments that they have as far as getting this implemented. Coming up forward, we're gonna start pushing everybody for their goals. We developed a asset list that's pretty comprehensive. Our capital asset list wasn't super accurate, so we are doing an actual physical inventory of everything that we value, I think, in the $2,000 or higher range. So we have an actual accounting with the serum, and there's another thing, because that didn't exist.
Joy.
So, there are about letters, there's the next pages that you'll get too. My statement on the city finances, I'll just read very real quick for you. Available for you to review and discuss further in two weeks on the 18th of January is the finance statements due to current date. For your reading over the next two weeks, you'll see the past quarter's tax, which I'm gonna email to you should you, because it's a large packet. And you'll also see the agent report, the listed invoices, and the abbreviated financial statement. The overall position shows us at about 23% of the budget performance. We're currently 25% throughout fiscal year, so we show that we're a little bit behind where we should be. But we just came out of the end of one year, and we're gonna see all of our tax revenues coming in, so we should be right, we'll be past where we are, we just haven't gotten the payments in yet. And we're operating at about one and a half to 2% surplus. The key highlights that I'd say, where we see excessive spending so far, is in the fire department, animal control, streets, water, and sewer. Now, I will suggest that none of these put us to where I'm concerned, that we're gonna be significantly over budget in those departments. But I did want to highlight why we're over. In almost every department that was over, we made some adjustments to salary to align them all with what the standards are supposed to be, including the year-end salary adjustment line that was antiquated, to say the least. So we've got that updated to be equitable and fair across the board. The streets department and the water department, the predominance of their excesses in overtime. Currently have a couple vacancies that we'll talk about when we get into the HR side of it, but once we fill those vacancies, we should see a reduction in overtime. However, after all, we can call the problems that can happen, because we've got an aging infrastructure that we have to keep up with. So in summary, we feel that we're adequately, adequately able to sustain a pace of financial prudence for the city. In the next few weeks, we're gonna begin implementing a purchasing system that's not gonna be back end, it's gonna be front end. So the purchase orders will go out before the items are actually purchased, instead of reconciling them after the fact. By doing that, we should be able to better predict and control our spending. We wanna tie it in as we get our GIS system developed, with being able to track across the city, where water and sewer has the highest expenses, and we can look at that and predict where we need to invest for infrastructure because of it being a high problem area. So we're gonna try and utilize the financial spending tools that the city has to predict the infrastructure needs, which should be able to balance out and show us kind of like a pinpoint map. When you have the kind of condensation pinned in one area, we'll know that that's an area that we need to look at for opening up streets to get to utilities or something that's more invasive. So, moving on to the HR position, we did address the HR aspect of what we approved previously for bringing up the TMRS program. We've submitted to TMRS that we want to go ahead and buy out. We're just waiting on the finalization from them on that. It should be implemented over the next several months, and I think that's gonna be a great time to tell our retirees. And we currently have a vacancy in the sewer and water distribution, and we were looking at one vacancy in the police department that could be brought on by a second one that we're expecting to be filled today. While I'm on that topic, I will address the question of whether or not we pursue more than one candidate for this. While we had applicants on the soft side of it, where they expressed interest in some way, shape, or form, we didn't have a huge pool of applicants wanting to actually come and sit for an interview when they were brought to us. So we pursued through active engagement over the last three to four months, discussions with other people through connections we have in the police leagues and the associations, to find out who had interest in coming to the city of Ballenger, both to move the families here or to just move their careers here. And what we came up with was the candidate that we want to present tonight. So, he's not the sole candidate that we can, it's not the only person we had discussions with, it's not the only person that we filled out, and it's not the only person that we solicited. So there was a pool of people, however, this met the needs of the city and the needs of the department and the needs of the individual collectively, the best way that we saw, so that's why we're bringing him tonight as a candidate. We think that once we fill our vacancies, it's gonna rebeat the strain with the right candidates filling those positions, so we're being selective in who we bring in, whether it's for the streets department or the police department. And since October, we have lost three employees, and we lost one to a termination, and we had two that decided to retire. And formally, we want to acknowledge and applaud the careers of Mr. Johnson and Mr. Winchester, and we want to support them in their retirement from the city. We wish them both blessings and their appreciation for their futures, and we thank them for being a part of the Ballenger community. As far as COVID-19 goes, we have had lots of people who the last 30, 45 days have worked for the city that have gone to self-quarantine state. We encourage people, regardless of what the totality of the test is, to immediately quarantine once it goes into effect. That's also why we've kind of stepped up the mask and sanitization and everything else, when people come to interact with city employees in the city hall or out in the street. I'm sure somebody have noticed the scanner at the front. We put up some extra shields to segregate the public from the backside, so that we don't have communication of any type of disease in that arena. And we're actively working with screening every person that comes in to, not necessarily refusing the right to conduct business, but to make sure that safety protocols are being taken, and that we conduct that business in a safe environment if and when we do have somebody that's screened, getting in a negative state. Overall, the assessment would be that the city would benefit from increasing staff closer to our capacity, and it would reduce overtime and spread workload, which would reduce the mental and physical fatigue that some employees experience. Then again, we wanna be selective of who we hire, because we wanna bring people in that have longevity, and they can participate fully in all of that. And as far as our areas of concern for that last point on the statement, the most concerning, I'd say right now, other than other infrastructure that's come up, that I'm sure some people had a discussion about, is the alley that begins in the intersection of the 6th and 700 block of railroad, which is right here. It heads southeast and it joins another intersection of another alley that runs between Broadway and 7th. During a preparation for resurfacing that alley, we called for a DITTEST 811 call, and while they were out there, we noticed that there was a substantial natural gas leak in that alley. When ATMS came up to conduct the repairs for that alley, there was some involvement with our infrastructure that's in the ground that caused some damage that was quite substantial. Once they had a contractor come out and replace that line, which should have been replaced years ago by our understanding, the contractor caused some additional damage. And our, under the cost of our project, if we were to assume the repair, construction, and reconstruction of everything that exists there went from being a manageable budget amount to an excessive amount. So we opened up a discussion with our insurer, to which we found that we were not insured for the infrastructure that the city owns that's underground. It is available as a rider. However, they express that less than 2% of cities insure that type of system. And so we are working with ATMS and the contractor to come to some type of a resolution in making sure that they're held accountable for their actions and their liabilities in the alley, and to determine what fault we fall in it, if any at all. And we don't anticipate that we have any.
And we're, we've had that conversation start before the holidays, and we're set to meet with the local supervisor with ATMS next week.
Yeah, it's gonna come out to the wall. But ATMS, they've already sent out a camera scoping company, I can't remember the name of it, to look through our sewer system and see where there could possibly be damages. And they did hit an area where there was no ability for it to communicate through, which suggests that's either damaged or crushed. We haven't had any calls, any backflow or anything, so we think that's dispersing itself out either end.
I have a question. Did ATMS indicate how, why they didn't notice a substantial gas leak? Most of the time, I've had experience with removing a gas meter and stuff by accident, not me, so yeah. But ATMS noticed this, they noticed that real quick, and so I was just...
I gathered from, this is solely conjecture, because I do not recall at any point in time, I wouldn't have been surprised if they had admitted to knowing up there, but it seemed as though they were quite surprised. From what I understand, this contractor was supposed to replace the steel line with a polymer line years ago, so that they probably weren't running their sniffer truck across it, kind of like they do in some of the areas where they know they have potential for these.
They usually have pressure.
They were surprised when they found this.
Uh, because that kind of, that gives, it's worrisome that we can have a substantial gas leak downtown and not know.
Mm-hmm. There's a, the potential for a lot of stuff to happen with proximity to it.
Yep, right there, I mean, we've got body shops, we've got tire shops, we've got a gas station, and bounds of traffic where sparks happen.
Yes.
So, I was just, it's concerning.
Yes, I agree. But we are working with them. We are optimistic that we're gonna come to a resolution that's not gonna impact the city financially. And it seems like they're well-informed. We have prepared everything to submit to them as far as claims go, but they may not have had a discussion with us in person before. As far as our infrastructure goes, we're making some strategic repairs to the water grid. We're also planning some more strategic cuts to remove old portions of the system, but we're doing it in a methodical manner. So we should see the quality of water improve over the next, I would like to say 36 months. It's not an overnight fix for what we're finding. It's a spigot mess of stuff that was replaced, and they left the old things connected. So it's kind of like a couple waters sitting on windowsill. Until it gets bothered, it's gonna, it's gonna stagnate, and that's what we found is happening. So we know what it is, we know how to fix it, we just have to find where it's hiding, and as we find it, we can replace it or we can cut it off. So we do know what's going on, and we are working towards a resolution. It just takes time without digging up the entire city. So, we are moving forward with the Community Development Block Threat Program, Four Streets Improvements, which is going to address some of that other infrastructure stuff at the same time. We are in pace and successful in everything that we've been doing so far. So we should be still commencing some of that around, do you have any soft time mid-summer?
We're gonna be ready in a bit for the payment grant in the next 60 days to commence one thing they said, end of April 1st to May, maybe June, then we'll get into the hotter tent of the meeting. We have sent out an RFP on a new CBPG grant cycle, and it is solely addressing water and sewer infrastructure. And so we're waiting for the RFP deadline for the grant consultants on.
The next grant that we had done in the past was a fire department grant for the Newtys Backrads. We are told that it had been delayed slightly, but we're still on pace to get the thing in a matter. Do you have a date on that?
We just signed an extension to that because of COVID, they've had to shut down again, and so they postponed the delivery of the trucks. So we just recently had the mayor sign an extension, and it was preceded by TDA to the grant administrator.
Okay.
And I got that back today, TDA accepted and approved the extension.
Awesome. And we also have several ongoing settlements with the insurance company from the storms and building damage that's here in the city, so we're expecting that's gonna resolve here pretty soon, and we're gonna be able to start remediation. One issue that we do have is that we can only select to engage a contractor that's registered with the city and vetted or licensed by the city to conduct business here. However, today, regardless of the number of contractors that have performed roofing work inside the city limits in the last 24 months, only four have actually been licensed, and less than 20 permits have been issued. So we are kind of over a barrel as far as what we can do, because not all of those contractors are specified as being adept in commercial or playtime construction processes. So that chokes it down even farther, where we can't get a valid pool for some of these projects, where it exceeds what the budgetary thresholds are. So we're working without actively going out and soliciting all of these contractors to come and get their permit, like we're taxing them, but we're allowing them to come in, and they have spread the word amongst themselves a little bit, that they need to come in and pay not only the registration annually, but they have to pay back permit fees for jobs that they completed. So we're working with them as much as we can. It's just very slow pace getting them engaged to come and do such. So, we do anticipate that in the next 30 to 45 days, we'll start having all of our stuff remedied, and it shouldn't take long as they start to do it.
So is that for the actual contractor, the subcontractor? So as in the roof, it's the ones that come out to do the work with?
The buyer charter would be whoever's, whoever's engaging the work. If somebody is working and has a display of another company name, and they're performing work in subcontracture, technically they should be registered.
Oh, really?
So ABC Roofing Company should, if they hire the EDF Roofing Company to come and actually do the work, both of them should be registered contractors inside the city. Going forward, after you get through that letter, is Jesse's financial statement. We'll see a couple things in pink, highlighted in pink, were those that flagged at...
What's what?
Essentially, what I meant to highlight in pink was anything that flagged at being at or above 25%, because we're at 25% of the years, theoretically. So essentially, I just wanted to point out those areas, but I summarize all of that in this statement. And then I do have the chat rooms available for you guys, too, those behind the door. Essentially, that's my administrative report, if they have any questions for me.
John, I have a question. Just for clarification purposes, you said you started the search for chief of police three, four months ago. Who initiated the search?
It didn't, go ahead.
We did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, John and Bron, okay. I got that, so I'll make sure we can clarify, so.
Point out of how we did this.
Yeah.
So we, we didn't start it as a pursuit of a chief. We started it as a pursuit of a detective and a lieutenant. In the discussion of this with the current chief of police, we came to an understanding that he wanted to further his career. He wanted to stay working with the city, but he wanted to pursue education and further knowledge. In doing such, that would open up the position of chief, so that he could pursue that. I'm kind of taking away from anything he might wanna say, but that's how we got to the position of exploring the opportunity for a chief. So we didn't engage a search for a chief because we were trying to displace anybody. We engaged the search for a chief because a vacancy had come open. It just, we didn't, we wanted to let him do it on his own time and tell people the way he wanted to tell them, instead of us forcing his hand. So that's why it comes across as behind the guard, but that's not at all what our intention was.
No other questions?
No other questions? Okay, at this time we'll take the consideration of a statement and request on the chief of police.
Um, I would just like, uh, for y'all to consider, uh, the request is for me, the pre-alien appointment is chief of police. Um, shall I be set down as lieutenant? And for y'all to appoint him to chief. Um, as I'm pretty sure we all discussed before, um, an executive before. So I guess we just have to make it public, so.
I, it's good to say, and I, I kind of know that Jeff had some questions about how this all started and everything. I, I would like for everybody to understand that this was, you know, conversations that you and I have been having about where you're at professionally, where the departments at, where the cities at, and where we wanted to go, and see for the department in the future. That, you know, you and I have been talking about this for a bit of, almost the whole time I've been here. And, uh, and, and one of our conversations, I was very candid with you that in my career in law enforcement, that I've seen in a situation where several individuals in your particular situation stepped into a chief role not having the benefit of the session planning or training. And my, my hat to you that you, you did well for what you had, the tools that you were provided.
Okay.
And so, uh, seeing the opportunity to take a step back and re-do, re-group and get into these classes like the LCC, the Development Leaders and Trilogy in college to come back at it better prepared.
And we've, we've always had a position open at the PD, at Port Patrolman. Uh, when Brian and John came on, uh, discussing the needs and wants for the PD, you know, we need a detective, lieutenant, however you want to call them. We need that position. And so that's when they said, yes, we can do that. So that's when we started looking. Um, and going through everything, it was my, my idea of, you know, what if we can find somebody to come in as chief? Let me become a detective lieutenant so that way I can, cause you know, three, four years ago, you know, I, I only had two, two years on the streets here in Ballenger, Texas. I started in Ballenger, I'm gonna finish in Ballenger. That's my goal. Um, and if you look back through the history of the PD, thirty-plus years, each chief is what I'm calling a homegrown chief. They started here, they finished here. Um, I'm not sure about Boggs.
He was from here.
He was from here, he is, I'm very sure he started here.
Yeah.
And.
My next one?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know if he's been anywhere else. I have never.
I said, I was.
Yeah. JC was the same way. Uh, JC was in the sheriff's office for a while and then moved over to the PD. Same way with Mark Melty. Uh, he had a little stint in the Aviling ASU or ACU. And, but he came here. And so we had the opportunity to bring someone in with knowledge and experience to have a better, a, a different eye on to approach for the place, for the community. And this is, this is what the city needs. So.
So to be clear, this is your request?
This is my request.
This is what you want to do?
Yes.
Has nothing to do with the capital, has nothing to do with.
No, I mean, I'll give you my own, well, being chief of police and I love this town. And I love this town more than order. You know, we need someone else to come in, so.
Well, and you remember having a conversation with me about all this?
Yes.
And what, what was the one thing that I told you I wanted out of your department? I want your department to get better.
Yep.
Cause I know it can be better.
Yes.
It has been disappointing to me for a long time.
So.
And I'm not blaming you specifically, don't take it like that.
Right, no.
I've been disappointed at, well, I gave you my concerns.
Yep.
And I mean, you know, things of that nature. And I, I would love for these people, myself included, to not see what I've been seeing for the last several years out of the department. Okay, I, that's, that's my statement on it. Because, um, the people of this town are at a loss for what to do. When we have non-conditions and things of that nature. And, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to step down some, because two years is not enough. For experience.
Right.
They tried to put my dad in as chief of police after two years on the street and he quit. He knew he didn't have, there was no way he could be a chief. And he quit. And that's a big step from, you're still wet behind the ears.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anybody with.
I, I, I understand.
Always wet.
I understand tremendously some of the stuff that you had to go through. Uh, I really did. Even though I've never won a pitch.
I think this is an opportunity for you to get a, further your education and give you an opportunity to advance. And it's an opportunity for us to bring the PD inbound here to a different level than we've had it now. And I think this is a good opportunity for, for mine and the city, but for you.
Yes.
And I will say it takes a courageous man to admit that. And thank you for stepping into that role and doing your best.
Yeah, I mean, I've been the right guy for the right time, you know, but now, you know, a different guy is better than what I can do. Not for right now, I'm not, I'm a bad person right now, but.
I know you have, you have helped me at one time, but I have fallen tremendous and you're a target and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Well, I can, we just need a motion to accept, uh, against, whether it can be seen as a chief, that it's not a reservation from the department. It should take a step down from the position or title.
I make the motion that we accept stand reservation, the reservation to step down as chief.
Hold on a second.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next time the city council will consider a vote on the acceptance of a candidate for the vacant position of lieutenant in the police department.
Yes, that would just recommend that I would go ahead and make the motion to accept the stand as the new lieutenant for the Ballenger Police Department, which a lieutenant in a department this size is the lieutenant, the detective, and essentially by proxy, the assistant chief.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carries.
Yeah, Mayor, I just go ahead and just say, if we go ahead and, we've, we've got to go into executive here in a minute on, uh, we'll end the conversation on five-four. I'd ask that we go ahead and handle five-five first and then we'll, when we come out, we'll be able to take the motion concerning five-four.
Okay. So moving on to five-five, city council may consider a vote on a resolution making the city manager responsible for all the affairs of the police department. Not something to say to that.
Please.
In November of twenty nineteen, which was before you were here, of course, we had proposition C, which we did and everybody voted. And honestly, I voted for it. I don't have a problem with it. And I think with your background, you probably very, be very suited for this. My issue is that in the charter, you have to, you have to amend it properly. So by the council voting this, it's just not the proper way to do it.
Okay.
That's the issue.
Okay. Go ahead and address it, but, uh, it's, it's not completely obliterating the chap, the, the article and the part that you're talking about. Essentially what this is, is providing the initial or the necessary oversight to assist the council in the day-to-day operations of the police department. I'm not able to discipline, dismiss, or anything else, but it allows you, the citizens, to be able to come directly to me with a complaint. And I can launch that investigation on behalf of the council and, and provide that, that oversight to assist them. Because this is a, I don't, I don't want to take anything away from them. They do not have the background nor the understanding of day-to-day operations of a police department. That's why the resounding cities across the state or charters do read that the police departments and the chiefs serve at the pleasure of, of the, the direction of the city manager. For that very reason, because we're able to be more reactive and attentive to concerns or complaints instead of having to wait until we have to have a call meeting to address the complaints. So I can receive the information, I can conduct the investigation if it concerns the chief. I can work alongside the chief in an investigation, internal investigation of an officer. But then the chief can do the disciplinary action by policy, the department policy. But then we would also come in tandem to report back to the council and their, their actions to be taken within all the scenarios this.
Okay.
And so the, the, the meat of the charter language is still intact. This is just allowing the community to have a, a, an easier person to locate with a problem than trying to track down one of the council members.
So what has kept us from coming to the city administrator in the past? There's nothing in the charter about not speaking to it. It just, as, as the city ma, city manager, you are the acting head of the department. It's just that you can't make the final say-so when it comes to the law on the police department.
Charter and I understand it right now, you can tell me all day long what you want, but I don't have any authority to investigate and look into the complaint.
You don't, but that's why you bring the council into it, correct?
The council does not understand a lot of that stuff and it will waste invaluable time where if I have the ability to go ahead and launch the investigation, I, I communicate with these folks all the time.
Correct.
And so I make them aware of what we've got going on and that I'm looking into it and information will be forthcoming. I don't have to wait around till a council meeting to get direction to. So this allows me to go ahead and move faster on, on complaint. Or say if you had a complaint, it allows me to represent you in a quicker fashion than to wait to, to present it to the governing body and then receive directions.
And I can understand that completely, but also having the governing body is kind of checks and balances. Not saying that you personally would ever do anything that was wrong or in after, or even like that. But to me, that's the whole purpose of the way it's set up, is for the whole checks and balances system.
Well, it's still there. It's still there.
Well, that's not the big purpose of the council. Well, I, I don't know if it would be the purpose of it.
Why can't we go?
But, and I'm not saying that, and, and again, I'm not saying that perhaps you should have a more active role in it. But to me, personally, I can't speak for anyone else, but just to me, the way that it reads and the way that the, um, agenda reads, it seems like, yes, you, there, there is being changes made to the charter without it being voted on, especially when we just, a year ago approximately, had a vote and it failed. So you may, I don't, I don't know if there is a way to reword that, you better specify it.
Would you like to read the resolution?
What have you? Then you read the resolution.
Well, you'll have to read it.
Request that you, you read it out loud so we can get it to record the resolution.
I would just ask that Pat address, um, the difference because he understands the difference. And also address what he's said in the past, when it was going up for vote and things like that about how cities our size are structured on things like this versus other areas.
If he wants to repeat that for anyone else, that's great, but I remember it and I know.
Well, I'm asking you to clarify.
That's why I voted for it. But again, my issue isn't with that.
I would just like for it to be on the record, is what I'm asking.
But, um.
We do all for it.
Thank you. Um. You are married, well, it's not really my position.
Now, I understand your concerns on how, and as you said, I was here during the charter election. And the big difference in the charter election laws is we'll put the city manager, would hire a police chief, would, um, discipline the chief and would have any separation, put in termination.
Mm-hmm.
This basically, in, in what somebody said also, the city council is responsible for everything. The way this flows, city council hires city managers to ensure that the day-to-day affairs of the organization remain. They have, they cannot, they only act as a body. And as a body, they have to post an agenda and have a meeting after seventy-two hours. And that is not conducive to supervising employee. So for example, when the chief comes in and says, I need something, who does he call? He calls the mayor, for example, or he called Rick. Rick doesn't have the authority to direct him to do anything. Because the council would have to convene. So what the council is asking by this resolution is essentially to give a point man. First, who's responsible already to them, to the affairs, to the entire organization, in essence, to basically be that point man to supervise the police chief.
Mm-hmm.
Ultimately, the department is still under the control of the council. In the sense that they make all the hiring, firing, and disciplinary decisions of the police chief.
Okay.
But it really, and what you said as well, it would be a complete waste to have an experienced former police chief who can actually help and work with our police to basically prevent them from collaborating and cooperating together. So that's the goal of this resolution, is to make it clear that the chief is going to work with the city manager, the city manager will work with the chief and be that point man for the council.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it makes it clear that the council retains the ultimate control over the, over the department in the form of termination and hiring, the firing of the police chief. So I think this will actually, our charter doesn't really speak to the day-to-day supervision at all of the police team because it's not there. It's, it's different than the, the way the charter provision of the fire department crew. Under the fire department, strangely enough, it says that the fire department is under the control of the council. Doesn't say that in the police department. So taking that very area, basically we're going to use the most beneficial, again, council has total control ultimately of the city manager and the police department. But this gives the day-to-day affairs of the department that supervisory role of the city.
Okay. What, if something was to be brought up, what is to keep them from having a special session meeting to discuss whatever it is?
Nothing.
So I mean, in, in essence, the whole thing about, well, we can just kind of cut through and it'd be quicker to make this decision to do whatever else. We don't have to wait. It's kind of mute if they can call a special session to discuss something.
That's right, with seventy-two hours. Rarely do personnel issues and issues where you can wait seventy-two hours to address them. And of course, remember if it's on Wednesday, that means you're gonna call a special meeting on Saturday or Sunday. I don't, I mean, you can't always get the councilmen together on short notice on those kinds of issues. It's just a practical. I mean, I've been doing this for twenty-two years. And to get a call, special call council meeting, so he's got to call the council. Sure, some, almost the council, I imagine, work. And so, you know, they, they, they can just come at the drop of a hat. And again, if you've got to wait seven, three hours minimum, in five days, if it happens to be on Wednesday, if you want to do it on Monday, it's stable, but at a point when the issues have already come up and need to be addressed.
And personally, if I'm wrong, just personnel matters of, of any, whatever, is not, uh, does not meet the definition of emergency.
It doesn't say that your only life and death are basically being presented. And I would caution anybody about calling it emergency, but you can do emergency with western side.
Well, it's a special segment, so.
But anyway, that's, it's really not a point.
But I learned to see most things.
Um, but, but again, so if you do pass this resolution, simple by calling that, how does it affect the charter? Is it added to the charter? Is it just simply amendment found somewhere else that you have to go dig it for if you don't know about it?
Of course, the charter states, and this is recited in per paragraph. Section seven point one of the city charter provides, the city manager shall be responsible for the proper administration of all the affairs that the city placed under the control. for the proper administration of all the affairs of the city placed under its control or resolution of the city council. So this was already contemplated by the charter. And if you think about it, there's no other departments other than the fire and police that's outside his control. So, if you look at the charter and the difference in the fire, the way it's written, it really does not have the ability in the fire to be much more, this doesn't really work, we have to change it for the fire. Under the police, it's a different charter wording. And again, this is a day-to-day supervision over the police chief. So it's really something that's not addressed in the charter itself.
Okay. And you said it was seven one, where was it?
Seven point zero one.
Um, well, below that, you got A, B, C. Do you know, happen to know which one, just without me being a third paper? Just a touch here, okay?
I don't have any part charter.
Here.
Is part of the confusion on this duty, the fact that it says that the manager is responsible for all affairs of the police?
The part of the confusion, of course, I just glanced at the resolution. No, the whole thing that I have, that I have an issue with. And if this is not the issue, and if I also, I'm not a lawyer, is the fact that we just tried to pass something like this. Although I do realize that prophecy had more in it than just this.
Right.
And it didn't pass. So, and then if we're amending the charter, which you're saying we're not, we're just adding a resolution, I can get online with that, but it's, you know, I don't like being what she wants you. You can do it or you can't do it. And that's, that's the issue that I have, and that's the only issue that I have.
Well, I was just, because the wording on it is what concerned me because of the prophecy thing from the last one.
Well, yeah, I've not read the resolution, I've just read.
Well, no, I'm just talking about what's.
Oh, the agenda, yeah, because the agenda really just.
It's seven point one C is where it talks about his duties. It just said, he, the city manager, shall be responsible to the city council for the proper administration of all the affairs of the city placed under its control or by ordinance or resolution of the city council. So that's what this is, a resolution.
And then that's where it falls under, where it goes down to one and two, and now I've shoved it so much, I think I've lost my place, but. Anyway, it's one through seven, I think. So is that where said resolution would fall under? Or again, if we didn't know, I mean, we're going to know, but if someone comes in and needs the help, they're not going to know. Does that make sense?
Every act we take, this is a resolution that will be published in open debate. So that's how basically the charter itself says, council can direct the city manager and place things under his control or by the resolution in addition to what the charter says.
It is published in open debate, but the minutes are no longer available online after over a year ago. So it's really hard to go back and find things like that when you're digging for it. Now, can I come down here and possibly request something? Sure, but that's realistically a waste of your time and a waste of my time because you had to go dig that. So as I'm fine with a resolution, as long as we're not completely cutting the council out, I'll go with it, I mean, just speaking for me. And I do think that his know-how is going to help along this line. I think we need it. Like Steve said, there has been a lot of issues in the past. And also, I'm sure bringing in the new chief will hopefully alleviate that as well. But just the way that it was written was disconcerting. And it's okay, and sometimes a little vague, which is why I had something else clarified earlier. So maybe that's another thing that we can work on to do better.
And essentially, we're kind of in an old charter, new charter realm right now. And when the opportunity presents itself, the charter committee will be reset and will look at those that need to be questioned or asked again when the election term is up and we can go ask them again. I'm hoping that that language will be approved the next time we do it, because it brings us into a complete manager, council, former government. Right now, we're kind of half in, half out with some of our language and some of the charter reading the way it is. So that when you come into a real manager, council, former government, it brings the PD and other departments completely under the city manager. But at the end of the day, anything and everything we do is going to be resolved in this regard. And, you know, it just, that's where we're in a state of check and track throughout the entire state. And so, we've got a lot of things going on. And it's by people like you standing up and bringing things to my attention and talking to me. And I've talked to Chad, I've talked to Jed, I've talked to Bill and Rochelle and a number of other peoples throughout the community. This is how I learned where things have been and where we are, where people were wanting things to go. And so, anytime you have a question or something pops up that you have a concern with, please do not hesitate to come forward. I'm usually pretty much always here. So thank you.
And your response would be a Facebook.
I try.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
One thing I would like to say is, if something like this resolution gives a resource to Ray, that would be so welcome because, I mean, if Stan had someone like you in his corner with a relationship like you've had with Ray and Sweetwater, I think Stan would have been able to have, you know, have enjoyed that, having someone to turn to when he had issues and someone to ask questions to. And it would have just been a wealth of knowledge, a knowledge base for him.
This is the whole thing that we've had, we've had meetings with the police department and we sat down with every member of the department. And we shared with them that, look, this is what we're wanting to do, is we're wanting to invest in every member of this department. And the sergeant on down to the newest patrolman, that we're wanting to invest in them and give them that succession training and the other training that is necessary to become a peace officer, a well-vetted officer of, of, beyond the basic academy. And that's where we're at, that's what we're doing.
Not everything needs a city council meeting or a school board meeting. If you have good leadership, they just need somebody to come to and say, "Hey, I have a problem, what's your advice?" They don't just, you don't have to have a city council meeting every time, if they have someone like you in their corner.
If we have someone like him, who we've only had for a short matter of time.
Yep.
Which is where the checks and balances come in.
Yes, ma'am. So maybe we'll just need a motion.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'd say something. I'd like to see more officers patrolling, more. I haven't seen no officer patrolling at all. You know, and so I'm sure it's going to change, you know, it's going to be nice, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, that'd be really nice to see more patrols, because I haven't seen one, I mean, in a long time. I mean, I will see them like once in a while, but not, you know, around the neighborhoods or, you know, cruising through or anything like that. And you've got so much people walking in the streets, you know, so that'd be really nice to get them out and, you know, so they can see the officers, you know.
When I come here many years ago, we only had three people. The chief of police and Chief Ed, that's the two people that worked. And they performed Jesus all the time on the street, taking care of business. I never see anybody else. I hear gunshots going off, I hear jumping going off, they even up and down the alleys. And I never seen nobody here. Now, I'm just new here. And I'm coming from a new place. This is, they don't take care of business.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and go into section. Oh, on five point, oh, on five five, I'm so sorry. Okay, yes, we need a motion on five point five, city council to consider. We don't, yes. So we have a motion on five point five for city council. To vote on the resolution making the city manager responsible for all the affairs of the police department. Did you read it out loud or did I miss it? Or that was the part that you were reading earlier? So I thought that was part of you.
We'll read it into the record after they take the vote.
Well, that just meant, you're saying he's in charge of all the affairs, that's just what you said.
Right, that's the way that reads.
But that's not the way I understood you to say it. I understood Kesher to say that it would just be some daily affair in lieu of calling a meeting of the city council.
Okay, so if you'll pardon me stumbling around trying to read this thing. A resolution of the city council of the city of Ballenger making the city manager responsible for the affairs of the Ballenger police department. Whereas, section seven point zero one of the city charter provides that the city manager shall be responsible for the proper administration of all the affairs of the city placed under his control by a resolution of the city council. And whereas, section thirteen point zero one of the city charter makes the chief of police the chief administrative officer of the Ballenger police department and responsible to the city council for the administration of the department. And whereas, because the city council is a governing body subject to the Texas opening meeting act, it is difficult for the city council to manage and supervise the chief of police and the administration of the Ballenger police department and desire to delegate the management and supervision of the chief of police and administration of the Ballenger police department to the city manager. And now, therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Ballenger, Texas, that the city manager, one, the city manager is given the responsibility to manage and supervise the chief of police and to administer the Ballenger police department, the department, in cooperation with the chief of police. And, two, that even though the chief of police will continue to be responsible for the day-to-day affairs of the department, the chief of police shall report to the city manager and be subject to administrative direction of the city manager. And that the chief of police, prior to making a nomination of employment for police officers, clerks, and/or other employees of the department to the city council, shall consult with and obtain approval of the city manager of such nomination. And, four, that the chief of police, prior to removing and/or terminating the employment of any employee of the department, shall consult with the, and obtain the approval of the city manager. And, five, that the city manager shall be responsible to the city council to keep them apprised of the affairs of the department and the performance of the chief of police. And, six, that the city council shall, as mandated by charter, be responsible for the discipline and/or removal of the chief of police, passed and approved on this, uh, the fourth day of January twenty twenty-one.
Okay, who wrote that?
I did.
Okay, I still have problems with all the wording that says all the duties of the police department.
Just a citation back to what exists in the charter.
This one is copying the charter.
The charter already says that.
Do you agree with it, Steve?
My biggest problem with this is the way it's written here in five five, when it says all, after we said no to process. I'm good with Brian overseeing the chief and not having the ability to hire and fire. Because, giving him that ability, and that's against Brian, but one day there will be somebody besides Brian sitting there. And that gives too much power to wield by the city manager who can say, "Oh, I don't like you, get out." And so, as long as this circumvents a situation of that nature, I don't have a problem with oversight. I, in fact, I prefer oversight because that would circumvent a lot of the problems that I've dealt with in the past myself. Because there was no real structure as far as for you or me or anybody else to go because.
Okay. Ken, do you agree with this?
To a point, but with him having to report to us what's going on.
Okay, with that in mind, the overall community voted no.
And I agree with you.
So, I would ask you, as our representatives, to follow the voice of what the community has already agreed upon and then wait for this to come about in another election.
Chad, your question? I just, I just want to clarify something. So right now, the chief of police has the ability to hire or fire within his department, correct?
Basically, the police department is on it.
It's no hitting. So the chief of police has the ability to hire or fire now already. This does not give the city manager the ability to hire or fire the chief of police. That still falls under city council. So that's not changing anything in terms of the power that the chief of police wheels.
Nobody changes the power of the city manager.
I'm asking a question.
The thing of it is, you have to be real careful when you start slicing this pie. Because I already am responsible for all of the affairs of the police department for the bulk part already. Except for when they show up for work, you know, how they answer their calls, what they wear for uniforms, and who's hired and fired. Everything else, I have my fingers into. And so, John oversees the finances and we all have to oversee the budgeting and make sure the policies and procedures are being followed properly. And not only their policies and procedures, but the policies and procedures of the city itself. And so, all this is, this, I understand completely where you're coming from as far as what the vote was. This is a temporary fix to allow the citizens to have a fine-tuned point of contact for complaints and concerns. And then once, because you understand, this department, the police department, is the single, it's the highest reliability-based aided department in any governmental entity. And to have it left completely unchecked, except for these five people, when they can't meet other than when they post a seventy-two hour notice, it is very, very dangerous.
You can, there is a limit in there, but you can. Okay, well, with that in mind, then I also suggest that why can't you add to that a specific time until the next, this will be in effect until the next called election where the city can vote on it again. Just make it time-specific, because if you don't make it time-specific, then they can carry on to so-and-so and so-and-so in ten years down. Then everybody will forget, oh, yeah, what happened there? So if it's time-specific to the next election, then let the next election fix it in the charter.
Of course, the resolution is subject to decisions by council, they can.
Yes, but again, still, I get time-specific.
I think, I have a question. You know, if you're going to hire a chief of police, you're going to just do the job and just keep it where it is? Because you already got two councils that aren't decided. I mean, that's my opinion.
This, this whole resolution is being brought up from the standpoint of complaints and concerns from members across the community. This was brought up before I even came on as city manager. It was being talked about by the council members about bringing this resolution on.
Yeah, well, then it never happened.
Please, I've got the floor, sir. They started this conversation before I got here and under the direction of the council were asked to please hold off on that until they got me here and then bring the resolution on so that I could assist the council in better overseeing the day-to-day operations of the police department. Is that not right, Chad?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
I've been in the cabin to go see the judge here a while back, City Judge. And she was here to say anything, afraid of losing her job. I just have it like it is. And whenever it gets to where I can tell it good, I'll tell it good.
So, if you were, if this was the past, you wouldn't supersede the police chief if he wanted to come and address, like, say, he had a problem with you and he wanted to come talk to council, he could still come talk to the council. So it doesn't supersede his ability.
No. Well, that's as written as it, in any head department, department to the council, as written in there. And I think the, the issue that some folks might be hung up on was, yes, we definitely, we brought you in, that was the idea. That was a big part of the idea. And I think some of where people might be laughing or misunderstanding or not enjoying the fact is that, that they don't, it's the coordination between you two on the hire and the firing. I think that's the hand up. It's as if, let's say, you do bring a chief in that you don't agree with. Not you, maybe, again, a guy down the road. And you, and he got, he's got a super stark, they're bringing it in. And you're like, mm-mm, don't want him. And he, now that chief is handcuffed and can't hire the guy, you've heard of the job. I mean, that's what I'm kinda picking up, I don't.
For clarification, the only guy I had an issue with was, I saw it as amended charter. You've explained that, it's a resolution, it can be rescinded, you've read the resolution, I'm okay with it. And I appreciate y'all taking the time and, and going over that.
Yes, ma'am.
But it would have been nice and probably would have served vigilance of it if, of course, I realize this just came out Friday, you know? The, the language was a little thin, a little vague, like I said. But if there was any way to have posted what the resolution was gonna be before tonight's meeting and we could have actually read through it, it might have made it a little, a little less, I'd say complicated for lack of a better term. But, you know, I, I am fine with it. I am fine with the fact that Kim did rescinded. Um, I understand how it's a resolution and not totally amending the charter, but that was the main concern that I had with it. Especially since we literally just had a vote on it. And whether or not I agree with it or not wasn't really the perspective I was going with. It was more, this is what we should do, um, you know, quote-unquote the charter.
We're running one year and one and a half months of the past post-vote.
I just, if I'm understanding what Jeff said just now, I just wanna make sure I'm clarifying again. It says that the chief of police will come to you for advice on these things, but it doesn't give you the ability to block if he wants to hire or fire anybody, correct?
That's why I'm a bit concerned with a proxy like we have coming up previously. Because I remember, well, that was touted on the proxy. I remember that pretty well.
Right, but that's a big difference was they gave the city manager the ability to hire and fire in that department.
That's a clarification, you said that's not the case with this resolution.
Right, and I remember supporting the resolution.
To be perfectly honest with you, we, we looked at the habit the department is to do just that, the department is, and may need to run their departments. And it's like, one member of the community got with me at one time and said, well, if anything ever happened, would you consider doing the chief's job and the city manager's job? And I looked at it and I said, well, I can't say exactly what I told him. But, no, that's not it. I've been there, done that. I, I don't want to do that. That's for somebody, that's too much responsibility and power for one person to possess. In any municipality, especially of this size, you have to have that, that separation there. And so, that's why we hired people like John in to handle the HR and the finances. We're looking to hire Ray in to take over the rights of the police department and work with Stan to bring the department up to a new level of recognition and other things. I don't have time to run that and everything else. Since I do not have the time.
I do think it should be noted to you that the proposition C didn't solely focus on the police department.
No, there's a lot of.
There's been a whole lot of avenues that proxy covered that people voted against it for that had nothing to do with that.
And, and another line of advice, my advice ain't worth much at all, but our law for Steve has to stay as well. If y'all would be more transparent, if you would allow, I know you hate to Facebook it. All right, you don't post your agendas up there because it's the exact reason, I get that. All right, that's not, to me, in the world we live in nowadays, that's a whole stance. Especially where we're coming out of in regards to the drama that we, we had and were part of. I think the transparency level, the, the whole idea of having the resolution that would not have been read into record if not requested. You know, that is what people are looking at and that's their concerns, we don't know. And, and it's, it's just because there are ones that don't even wanna ask.
Well, and Jeff, to, to get to that point was that we had the conversation and I had it with the mayor. I said, this is the first place that I've been where, where we pass a resolution or an ordinance that is not read into the record.
Yeah.
And these are the things that are coming, these are, these are just some of the other changes that are coming.
That's right, I mean, if we're in that direction, awesome.
It's, 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 it's all, it's all baby bite. It's like eating the elephant, one, one bite at a time. And, and there's so many bites to be taken right now, it, it, you don't know what you wanna take next.
I think Facebook, too, you experienced this, I believe our Facebook account is currently suspended. So, um, we were hired to get into it, so.
Yeah, anyway, that's fine. I was saying, just the transparency, the perception, I think that was a big thing for Steve, was optics.
So not everything is over proven. Everything within the timeline, everything available here. Um, I know that's not convenient for everybody to come over here on Friday when they post it. They're working towards it, they posted it earlier, so, but the material is available here.
Well, at the, on the, the website, you know, the agenda was there, I can go to your website and I can pull the agenda, but there was nowhere for me to read the resolution, to my knowledge, it wasn't or nowhere it was. So that would have been nice, if it had been there and I could have read it previously. And then that probably would have alleviated a lot of my concerns and questions right there.
The first time I heard your resolution was when you read it a few weeks ago, because I didn't have.
See, that, that has to not.
That's an issue.
You have a council member who didn't know about the resolution until this meeting. You have two council members that didn't know about the resolution until this meeting. So that should be a concern and, again, not to the elephant, that needs to be addressed.
And I'm hoping that's an agenda issue.
Yeah. Maybe. Over email.
There's a lot of things here that we need to work on, but.
Yes.
Uh, what I would like to do is to accommodate and I would like the council, whoever would like to make the motion, is to reflect the motion, to say that you approve the motion as presented. You approve the, I don't wanna say this.
The motion is presented with the condition that it be, um, only approved in the next charter, only effective.
When we have the next charter election.
Or conversely, issues.
Would that, is that okay with y'all? Think it gives you your timeline?
I don't like that motion. I'm, I'll make the motion to approve five point five in timeframe until, until the next available charter election.
Do you have a rest there? Ken? And all in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. So at this time, we're going to convene or go into executive session. Um, motion. City council may convene into executive session to discuss the following matters under the following authority of chapter five five one of the Texas government. Five five one point oh seven four, personnel matters. One, personnel matters, six-month evaluation for the city manager. Personnel matters for the city hall, municipal court, street, water and sewer distribution, water and sewer administration, water treatment, parks, and non-departmental administration and legal. Five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney. Two, legal matters. Five five one point oh seven six, security. Three, consideration of security concerns. Five five one point oh seven two, real estate. Four, consideration of, or review of the purchase or lease of real property. Five five one point zero eight seven, economic development matters. Number five, deliberations regarding economic development matters. We will convene at this time at six fifty.
Make your question. Something wrong there, or something?
It is eight twenty-nine, we're gonna go ahead and return back to open session. Um, cross-pull discussion and action as a result of an executive session. And, um, we did the, the six-month evaluation for our city manager, Mr. Ryan Freedom. And we did, uh, fine because he met and exceeded our expectations as council. And therefore, we have agreed to approve the terms and contract of, or terms and conditions of his contract. Um, so that was the only action resulting out of that, um, particular, uh, item there. And we're gonna go back up to five point four.
We're gonna have a motion, should we ask it for that?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes. Uh, do I have a motion on that?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh, where are you at? I'm sorry, where are you at, please? The, uh, the contract, the, the contract expectation. Whatever Bobby said. She ordered it better than I did.
We're just approving the terms and conditions of this contract based on his exceeding expectations for his six-month document. And then we're going back up to item five point four because we have not addressed it. And at this time, city council will consider and vote on the acceptance of a candidate for the vacant position of chief of police in the police department and authorize the mayor to sign an employment agreement with the new chief.
Make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the new chief. Say it.
Do we know the new chief is in the office?
Mr. Cornet.
Ray Cornet.
Mr. Ray Cornet?
We're waiting for the vote and then we'll enter into the community. Well, as of right now, the new chief of police, as of tonight, is Ray Cornet. Uh, Ray Cornet comes to us from the city of Sweetwater, has twenty-three years of law enforcement experience. Uh, has been a, has had supervisional ranks with the PD as, as a lead detective with the city of Sweetwater. Uh, many child, had, uh, child cases, adult cases. He and I have worked some very, uh, significant events, needless to say. And, uh, uh, that's for another conversation. But, uh, uh, he has the, uh, a master's, you have a master's police officer's license?
Yes, sir.
Uh, he's attended the FBI trilogy series, which is for leadership roles in law enforcement. Uh, has, I can't remember, how many hours do you have towards your degree right now, towards your bachelor?
Eighty.
Eighty. Uh, is currently working on getting that wrapped up. Is, you've got a, what's the certificate for property and evidence through TATA?
It's in his master's application.
Uh, so he, he ran my property and evidence through. And so he, he took a room that was a jumbled mess and got everything coded, bagged, tagged. Uh, dealing with destruction orders, uh, establishing the proper accounts that are needed for, uh, monies that are taken into the police department as found property. And so he's gonna be a significant benefit to the police department and to the community of Ballenger. Ray, welcome aboard.
Welcome. Okay, I think that's it. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
They did, yes, we, we, we already settled that, so we just need a motion to.
I'll make that motion and then we adjourn.
I'll second that, unless Rick wants to.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is, thank you, we love y'all.